All right, um, I've shared the screen again, and I believe I, uh, we were just talking primarily about the, the new location for town.
Okay.
Yeah, it, it just.
Okay, I see it.
Yeah.
So, anything else we want to talk about, about the venue change? Uh, before we actually start going into the Warren articles?
No, I don't, I covered everything I wanted to.
Yeah, yeah, so, uh, everybody can help get the word out to. I imagine that first session might take a little while to get your quorum if everybody's hanging out at the high school.
Yeah, I, I, well, that's why I was, I guess the other thing to say is get there early. Um, would be, it would definitely help. Um, because we are going to be in a new venue. Uh, we also have, uh, new staff from the town clerk's office. Uh, first time doing town meetings, although Diane Packer is gonna help, help out, thank God. Um, she's, she's great. Um, but since this new staff there, it might take a little longer to check in and, and get into the, into the auditorium. But, uh, I'm hoping we could start as close to seven thirty as possible. Now, uh, just before we get into the actual articles, as you know, I go through an opening. They're really not ceremony, but it's more appropriate for setting the rules and, and standards and setting up the meeting. Uh, so that usually is the first fifteen minutes to a half hour of the meeting. This year, since most of the, um, articles are actionable, um, I'm not going to request, uh, town meeting to take up a consent agenda motion. For all intents and purposes, there are two no action articles, and one of them, uh, might become actionable if, um, an action under a previous article does not happen. So, I'm, I'm really kind of leaving that open, uh, so that we don't have to unravel a consent agenda, agenda motion, um, which is, just don't want to go there. Once it's done, it's done, and we hope. But, um, that's, if you've been at town meeting, you've seen that, that opening, um, call it ceremony. Uh, that's basically what is gonna happen. I'll, I'll give you a little heads up. Um, Greg Shepard, who served on the Conservation Commission for, I think forty-two years, or forty-plus years, um, is gonna be recognized through a resolution. Um, and I think that's more than appropriate, um, in his case, uh, so, um, it's being drafted now, and we will, we will also do that at the head of the meeting. Um, I heard we may or may not have a few dignitaries, but, um, basically elected officials, but we'll find out. We'll, we'll, we'll hear later. Um, if anybody's engaged in a political campaign, um, please leave that, um, outside of the auditorium, any activity. Um, and there'll be, uh, area designated for any candidates if they're going to be there to shake hands and do that kind of thing. Um, and that, that'll be all laid out to them. Um, but that's, if you're gonna do that yourself, I, I would appreciate it that you not do that in the hall, because every time I do it, somebody complains. Somebody complains. So I, I thought I'd mention it since the elections could be so close. Um, okay, into the articles now. Article one is, is an article, um, the, what we call a committee article. And it is the oppor- the only opportunity, um, for, um, committees, boards, and officials. Uh, without being specific to an action, I'll add that exception. Uh, for that, for those individuals or, or groups to give a report to town meeting. Um, I know that, uh, there will be a mo- motion to hear and discuss. Uh, the net zero, uh, report is gonna be presented. Um, and, uh, I think that was in part presented to the select board. Um, I, I caught a little what Julian was, uh, reporting to them. Uh, with a couple of interesting, uh, factors that, that they're going to be proposing, um, as policies. Uh, but, um, I think her, her presentation may be broader than what was presented to the select board. So we'll see, we'll see what that's all about. Um, it was. Does, uh, our article one to possibly, uh, further continue it until just before we take up the, uh, charter bylaw and review committee articles, which come later on in the, um, um, in the warrant. Um, there was some concern that, uh, a member wanted to actually discuss the CBRC report, where the motion that's being proposed right now is only to hear the report. So we'll see if that happens, but I thought I'd give you a little heads up that we, we may have a procedural motion that'll occur under Article One. Um, Article Two is, um, our, um, one chance in the fall town meeting to make adjustments to the omnibus budget, um, motion that was passed in it last spring. Um, there are, there, I think there are two, uh, minor adjustments. Um, and I think it's a, they're transfers of, of amounts from, um, uh, I think it's for expenses to, to salaries in two budget line items, four budget line items, actually. And I can't remember exactly what they are. Um, and they're, I, I don't remember the, the departments off, off the top of my head. But there are only some minor adjustments that are gonna be made here. Um, this is the opportunity for anyone, uh, also, um, to ask questions about the, what they heard in the spring and how's it going, um, you know, where are we, how are the revenues going? All those things, though, all those kinds of questions could arise under Article Two. Otherwise, um, it's, it's, you know, pretty, um, I'm not gonna say mundane. It's important for the changes that are being made, but it's not a high-impact motion that's being, um, um, requested under Article Two. Article Three is adjusting our financial sta- uh, situation, where it's gonna be rescinding some authorizations of, uh, unused debt. Now, this is not returning cash, per se, uh, to our funds or to our coffers. Um, there is, I think, only one request where an authorization was given for, I think the amount was around a quarter million doll- dollars, and it was under-authorized or under-borrowed, uh, by fifty thousand dollars. It's always good, um, or the audit is like to get unauthorized appropriations, um, or unused authorized appropriations off the books. And this is one way, the only way we can do that is to remove that, so that, of course, the town could authorize it more. Um, and it's, it's really a, a book, um, adjustment, you think of it as bookkeeping adjustment? Yeah, that's kind of what it is, um, but it has a greater impact, because it could, if it's a really large amount, it could actually affect, you know, things like our ratings and some of our ability to borrow and things like that. So, uh, deeper, more, more information by the, the gurus of finance should be sought, uh, on that one, but I just said I'd give a quick highlight. Uh, Article Four, Article Four is an article for unpaid bills, which normally goes in the consent agenda. Uh, but this year, um, as I was watching the Finance Committee hearing, I think there's about a half a dozen requests of bills that came in, which were primarily from previous fiscal years that cannot be paid unless they're reauthorized, um, or the funds are made available from this year's, uh, fiscal year. So I think there's a couple, two thousand and, uh, twenty-two and a number of twenty-twenty-three, um, requested of being made. Uh, two of them are, are pretty sizable, uh, they're in the fifty thousand dollar range. Um, and they're from a particular student, um, who was, I think, a, uh, off-site student, a Fed student, um, which, um, didn't get paid, and the bills came in later and, uh, got passed over or wha- whatever, they'll explain why it happened. Um, and we need to pay these. Beware that, um, we need, if everybody approves of this, we need four fifths vote on Article Four.
Four fifths, wow.
Yeah.
Is that the highest percentage we ever need for any kind of vote?
Um, yes, that we do a town meeting.
Yes, yes.
Uh, there are some other oddballs out there, but it, it's not something that, that, that we, we tend to get into at, at native, native town meeting. Um, Article Five is, um, stabilization funds. We have three of them, and then we have a trust fund. Uh, this is only dealing with, with the three, um, stabilization funds. Um, this year, uh, we have, um, a new growth, uh, identific- we identified new growth to be larger than what was projected in the spring. And what I think the town administration is requesting is that those funds be, um, allocated, and this is the only thing that this article does, is it puts money into the trust, the, these stabilization funds. And if I remember correctly, this, this amount that's going into the, uh, operational, uh, stabilization fund and the, um, capital stabilization fund. Uh, I don't think there's any OPEB money going in, um, you know, under this article. Uh, certainly, the details of all that, um, will be, um, laid out and explained very well, I'm sure, in the Finance Committee Recommendation Book. Um, as a matter of fact, throughout, um, all of these articles, I recommend highly, um, to get, uh, to, for members and residents to read that Finance Committee, uh, Recommendation Book if they have any inquiry or, or concern about any of the articles, that they do a great job of detailing, um, and giving background and, and trying to, trying to, you know, sit through the weeds and give you the salient points too, uh, of what occurred during their hearings. Um, Article Six is, um, transferring unexpended bond proceeds. Now, unlike what happened under Four, this is now focusing on bond, bonding proceeds that have been, uh, borrowed, that are laden and or resting in an account and are, are unspent and are unlikely, highly unlikely to be spent, uh, for the purpose for which they were appropriated. What town meeting will be asked is to take money from those bond proceeds, um, in appropriations to re-appropriate those funds for other purposes. Uh, the key about this, this, um, article that I've learned over the years is that oftentimes you must use the funds for the purpose for which they were, or a similar purpose for which they were originally appropriated. Um, if you have monies that were appropriated for sewer and water repairs for a specific project, and the bond was taken out and their, the, the, the actual cost of the job came in much, much lower, uh, those funds really need to be appropriated for other sewer and water projects. You can't go and throw, throw those funds into, to, uh, the school, school, native public school operation budget. Um, it's, the, and the other key is that if this were a bond proceed that were borrowed for a long period of time, it's, it's preferred, not always, it's unacceptable, but it's preferred that something that is appropriated for has the same life. So if you're buying, um, you know, supplies for, the annual supplies for a department, um, uh, or you're buying a fire truck, you wouldn't use those monies for annuals, um, appropriation, uh, for supplies for a department. They just don't mix. The, the borrowing term or the life of what you're buying or re-appropriating is dissimilar. And the key to everything is, it, it has to be pretty similar.
So, Frank, for the, uh, the, the mapping from like old project A to new project B, does town meeting have to approve the, the detailed mapping, or does that get deferred into the, um, the finance, uh, body or something?
Town meeting has to say, has to basically map out where it's coming from and where it's going to. Yeah, yes. Is that what you mean?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Good. Yep, that's all part of the motion. Um, uh, we used to do it in a table format, but I think the motion I saw was, was pretty much in, um, text.
And the capital projects that they, that the funds would be going to are already approved capital projects? I- i- in other words, ho- hopefully, the discussion has to do with, is that an appropriate mapping? As opposed to, is the destination project deserving of the funds?
I think the, the appropriate discussion is, the scope of this is, do you want to move the money from one place to another?
Yeah.
Uh, it's not always, not primary to the discussion. Is it appropriate that we should make a particular purchase? Um, I think the town gives a pretty good, um, explanation of, of what they're going to be using the funds for. Uh, and most of the things that, that I remember that we've, we've actually funded in this, using these sources of funds ha- have come off of our capital, um, improvement plan, the five-year or the long-term plan. So, um, they're, they're for purposes that are not jumping out, you know, one-time purposes that come up, um, sporadically. Uh, they usually go to something that has been planned, done.
Okay, and it looks like someone's got their, Bill, did you have a question?
Um, Frank, i- is that money ever used to reduce the loan, uh, to re- repurchase some of the loans? I mean, th- this is money we're spending, we're paying interest on, right?
That's correct.
So, is it ever used to reduce the principal balance?
We have, um, we have not lately done that. Um, but years ago, we did have a few of these transfer of unexpended funds, um, that were brought, put back um, and used to just, to pay debt down, similar debt. Um, in that way, yes, it, it does decrease the principal payment as well as the interest. And that's, that was done years ago, and it was a article that was similar to this, um, that was labeled, um, to decrease the tax levy or tax rate. Yes, but we haven't done, we haven't used that, that strategy in many, many years. Um, only because we haven't had a lot, lot to focus on that, we, we've been pretty tight with, with our budget the way it is. Article Seven, this is a redo. Um, I usually do put this in the consent agenda. Um, the funds that town meeting will be appropriating are funds that are collected from, uh, cable television subscribers that is paid to the town, which are dedicated for the use of public educational and governmental access. Uh, essentially, the funds go to Pegasus with, with, with some exception for administrative purposes. Uh, some funds are held, those funds are held aside. So, all town meeting is doing is taking money that's a special purpose fund and then appropriating or approving the dispensing of the monies, um, from the town's coffers to, to Pegasus. I think Brynlee has her hand up?
Yes.
I just didn't know how much you were gonna go into this one, and I just wanted to say that it was an extremely interesting conversation, so that if anybody did want to actually listen to one thing, um, at FinCom, I, I think this one's very interesting, because they really talked about the future moving forward and the changing of, um, of access, of the funds that are going to be available, because so many people are switching to streaming services, and it was a fascinating conversation. So I do, I do think if anybody's interested in this and, and our Pegasus access channel and everything that we have, I did, I do think it's an interesting conversation to, to tune into and listen to.
Yeah.
Thanks for that tip, Brynlee, yeah.
I, I, I would emphasize, underscore that by saying, I spent twenty-three years in this industry, in, in the cable industry, cable television, internet, and phone, and, uh, there is a major change to put, um, on with cable subscribers going to streaming services and, and other services. So, um, yeah, that was an interesting conversation. Uh, unfortunately, that isn't really what's happening here, the question that's being asked. Um, it's, uh, certainly peripheral, um, but I, I, I don't know how much discussion about that, that I would allow a town meeting, um, unless it has some bearing on whether you, town meeting, should or shouldn't make this appropriation. Yeah, I've read up on it or listened to the FinCom meeting, it was, it was right on point.
Yeah, I definitely wasn't, um, saying that any of us should bring it up. I was just saying that as individuals, if we're interested in, in how our Pegasus is funded and, and looking at that, I do think there's some interesting things coming down the road with that, and, and I think the conversation was interesting at FinCom.
Excellent point.
And was there someone else at Metro Works?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a, a comment, but it's, it's really, the reason this is always in the consent agenda is because there's really not much choice, that money is, um, is given by the cable company for pay access. So, that's the really only, that's the only purpose the town can appropriate it. If the town doesn't appropriate it, it just sort of sits in limbo and nothing happens to it. So, there's not a lot of, a lot of choice, uh, about, you know, deciding.
And Pegasus, and the downside of that is Pegasus would have to use its reserves. Um, and any nonprofit usually, um, has limited reserves. They don't, they don't grow unless they keep getting regular funds in. Um, Article Eight, this was, this article is your, our capital and improvement article. This, we usually spend a lot of time on this. Uh, there are a number of requests that are under it. Um, the requests are, I think, a hundred percent borrowing. Um, and it's split, uh, I think about sixty percent borrowing from tax levy or you could, you could say new growth. Um, um, or, uh, it's coming from the Sewer and Water Enterprise Fund or funds. So, um, I won't go into the details on this, I don't remember all of them, as a matter of fact. I, I did, uh, I did learn that there might be one change from what's published. Uh, there was one, um, issue, item that was in the book that's going to be published, I think, today or tomorrow. Um, and, uh, it was omitted inadvertently, so there might be an amendment to the, um, uh, motion under one, under the sewer and water, but keep, keep your eye out for that. Um, but it's, it's, look at the Finance Committee details. Uh, you'll be able to see the things that are being requested. And I think the total sum was around six million dollars, six to seven million dollars. Um, it is appropriate to ask questions about, um, funding sources. Uh, this, this is something that, that was also discussed under this article. Um, and, uh, as I say, it's, it's appropriate, uh, for discussion.
That, um, Frank, you said what, around six million dollars of?
Yeah, I think it was around six million, maybe more.
Yeah.
Between the, the, uh, tax levy borrowing and the sewer and water borrowing, um, it was a pretty sizable amount of money.
I- i- is there anything that guides, um, how much that request is from year to year, session to session? I, I, I mean, obviously, one, one answer is, well, here's the equipment or things that need to be replaced, but I'm guessing that we would always want to be replacing more than we can afford to replace, like, wha- what is it that caps it?
What I used to do with the former Finance Director when I was FinCom Chair is that, um, we would look at the levels of borrowing that were being requested and then look at what we anticipated the levy excess would be from the previous fiscal year. And if the payout on that borrowing for the next fiscal year allowed or would permit at whatever interest rate that we are accustomed to at, at the time, um, to borrow ten million dollars, then that would be the target, or at least the cap, um, that would be focused on. Another thing we looked at is Department of Revenue, um, does make recommendations of having a certain level of borrowing based on your budget amount, budget and revenue's amount. Uh, along with, the Select Board has financial principles, um, which they've set a number of years ago, um, which really kind of dictate, or give, give a sense of what their expectation is, um, for borrowing and what our reserve fund should be and, and so on and so forth. So, those are the indicators that go in, or at least in my day, those were the indicators that went into, um, making those, those calls, um, and at least evaluating, well, how much can we borrow? Um, to be safe, to be within our, our means to pay the borrowing back.
Thank you.
Welcome. Um, Article Nine, I think this is the first time we've seen this article. Um, gladly, I'll, I'll opine, I'm glad we are. Um, this is what's being requested under this article for Community Preservation Funds is not an allocation of funds, not an appropriation of funds, but, um, the allocation of the funds as a percentage as are available today. Now, you might remember, uh, CPA funds, um, and I'll probably get this wrong. There is a minimum allocation through the three buckets that it can be expended under. Um, and the, that really, then minimally, could be thirty percent of the funds available. Well, the town can choose to allocate more of a percentage of the funds. So that, let's say seventy percent of the funds go to, uh, affordable housing. Uh, twenty percent of the funds go to, um, recreational purposes, and ten percent go to open spaces. Um, I think those are the three buckets.
Historical.
Uh, his, okay, historical, thank you.
Spaces combined.
So, but I think, um, I think there's a heavier percentage, and I can't remember the allocations right now. Heavier allocation in affordable funds, affordable housing funds, and then the other two are equal amount of funding allocations. So all we're, all town meeting is being asked is to set the allocations uh, so that the funds that are, to give guidance to the CPA, um, committee, to give them guidance as to, okay, now we have this million or so dollars from the CPA. Um, how will, what is available for each one of the purposes, available, appropriate purposes? And then they're, they'll then mull out or go through, then through, um, the, um, whatever requests are made of them by entities, and then make recommendations for town meeting for specific appropriations.
Just to point out, since we have two members of the CPC, uh, here on the call, either Sarah or Bill, if you want to, uh, amplify or, uh, add anything?
Uh, Frank, my understanding is that we have those three buckets, uh, that were, there's a minimum required by law of ten percent for each. And then seventy-five percent is in that undesigned category, it can go anywhere. And don't forget the five percent administrative, which is really what we need to keep moving forward. Uh, and that's why we're taking this to town, uh, meeting. Um, we, we need money to hire a consultant to move forward so that we can finish our process.
Excellent.
Uh, and, yeah, I have a question later about how we should present, but let's go through the articles first.
Yeah, um, well, this, that actually is the essence of this article, of what is, what is being requested. Uh, and it, it's the first step happily, uh, that we're going down the road of, of being more positive, more progress, progressive in providing funds for, for these purposes, um, as the voters in town meeting have voted. Um, and that's it. Now, do you want to add something about the presentation?
Well, there actually, Frank, there, I think there are three of us that are presenting articles, and, and I have a generic question as to what the best process. process is. I think you like things short and sleek. This is the first time the committee is presented to town meeting. And my question is, do you, is it worth, or should we spend five minutes kind of bringing everybody up to speed? Oh, you passed this two years ago. Here's where we are now, as long as that's tight. Does that make sense?
It, it actually does make sense because each year we have new members that come aboard. And they may not have experienced the debate and discussion from previous years. That's number one. Number two, we, none of us have perfect memories. And I'm one of those people. And it's always good when, when a presenter gets up and gives like a, a ramp up as to, okay, here's how we got here. Here's where we are. And here's where we want to go, possibly go into the future. That type of presentation seems to be very, very good for town meeting purposes. If you can bottle that up into a ten-minute presentation, that's great. Just so that you're aware, the sponsors get one presenter. And then afterwards, if there's someone that's going to augment that, say, two of your other members want to augment that, let me know. And then I can then call on them and they can add, basically under debate, that information that you wish to have added to it.
Thank you. That's helpful. My, my thought was to try to answer as many questions before they're asked from town meeting. So some of the basic, is this money available to spend now? No, it's not. You have to approve it in the future, that kind of thing.
Yep, very good. And it doesn't hurt to have that available or a Q and A available and on the the table when you enter, if that's something that you're going to produce for yourself. Some of it, some of us are read-only learners too. And, you know, that might, that might be helpful for some of us to prepare.
Thank you. Yeah, the committee meeting i- is tomorrow, so this is extremely helpful and timely. Thanks, Frank.
You're welcome. Okay. Brynlee has her hand up.
I'm just curious, also, is, um, is it against the rules for them to also send it out electronically? I know that it can't only be electronic, but is it also okay to send an email to all of the members to, you know, for people who want to do homework in advance? Is that also possible?
Absolutely. You know, those emails are available on the town's website. I use that same database to email out to town meeting members so that they have a heads up of what the agenda is going to be, so that they can plan, hopefully plan ahead for the night's events. So, oh yeah, send, if you had electronic Q and A or, or any data information that's germane again to, to an article, use those email addresses. That's, I, that's, that's one of the reasons why I was put, those emails were put on the website.
And just to clarify, that, that's a generic statement then. So, so that would apply to the citizen petition articles just as well, right?
Any article, any article. And town meeting members will, will say, I, some have said, I don't, stop sending me so much information. That's fine. I, I stopped doing that. I'll take them off my list, but I, 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 you know, will blanket people with, with the agendas as I see it. And I, I see no reason why a sponsor can't, any article sponsor could do the same to town meeting members. Hey, nothing better than being prepared or better prepared going into a pro, this process. We need, we're being requested in Article 10 to amend our bylaws, which lay out the process for tax title payment agreements. Last I remember, which, I think this came, this article was modified or actually originally enacted when I was on the Finance Committee. So that's eighteen plus years ago. So I'm sure the law has changed. And I, and I think what, the reason why this is on there is that the town wants to update its process and have, you know, be, be current. And that's what I remember about Article 10. So if you want to look at, you know, the Natick bylaws, Article forty-three A, and then compare that, there probably will be a red line document in the FinCom book. But if you want to verse yourself before you get the book, you can look at Article forty-three A and get a sense of what's, what the subject matter is. Somebody's got their hand up?
I'm trying to figure out what tax title payment agreement. I don't know what a tax title is. I don't know what a tax title payment is and then agreement.
Tax tit, tax title is when the town goes through a long, prolonged process of assuming property because there's unpaid taxes.
Okay.
They're, what they're doing is they're starting the process to take the title of the property away from the current owner and then taking it as a town property. Now, there is a specific pro, process under law that the town has to follow. And before it even gets to land court, there are a lot of things that have to occur. And there's timelines and all kinds of things have to happen. Then the town can go through a process which is just as prolonged going forward to dispense the property in a manner that's appropriate and usually is dispensed under the the, and agree, there's, there may be agreements made by the town administrator of the Select Board to avoid going through the full process with a property owner. And that sets up the agreements for, as just popped up on the screen, thank you, delinquent taxpayers.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks to Brynlee for that link.
Thanks, Brynlee. So that was Article 10. Article eleven is a very important article, but we're not going to act on it. Article eleven, the MSBA application for Memorial School. We all know since the, you know, stopping the use of Johnson kiddos were dispensed throughout the, the system or district. But we, it also put emphasis or our eye where to next. And the town said Memorial School is where they're going to put their applications in for. This article is a placeholder, is a boilerplate, so that a town meeting was, could be asked about the disposition of, of borrowing and accepting the SBA response than it could at this time before it went for debt or review design and, and a debt exclusion. It, I, I didn't put it in the consent agenda because I thought that the town might want to give a very concise, short, concise, along with the school committee, a summary of where they, how, where they, what they've done and where, where are we right now? And it's my understanding, and I know Catherine's on here too, Catherine Coffin, is that the, the SBA has not given definitive answer on the application, at least the last I heard. So there's no action being asked under here, but at least I left it, I left it on the agenda so that if there could be a, a short, concise discuss, you know, overview and discussion, we could, we could have it at town meeting. I think Brynlee has her hand up, Doug?
Yep.
Yeah, I just, I know we go through these later and I just thought I'd update it now so we don't have to. The, they did a walkthrough with Memorial. That's part of the process for consideration and we have been informed officially that we won't know anything until December thirteenth, which also happens to be Taylor Swift's birthday, just in case anybody is curious, Superintendent, let us know that the decision comes down on Taylor Swift's birthday of December thirteenth. But the reason this is, was put in because they weren't sure. And once the decision comes down, there is a timeframe for how much time you have to go through the process. And if they hadn't had this article in, then we would have, they would have been behind the process in asking town meeting for necessary funding. And the reason it's no action right now is because there is no action needed because they won't know whether or not we're accepted until December thirteenth.
Thank you for that, Brynlee. Catherine, did you want to add anything to that either? She might be away from the computer. Okay.
Article twelve. Article twelve is a request. Now, I know this is being sponsored, the article was sponsored by the town administrator, but when I did the primer show recording, Jamie Erickson mentioned that this is really emanating from the Retirement Board. What is being requested is that those folks that fall under the Retirement Board Pension Plan have not received a COLA increase in some years. And I think what they're attempting to do here is to catch up with the amounts or at least the pension payments so that they are within market or, or they're reasonable or, yeah, within market. So what is, what is in the article is very clear. They're raising the, the base from thirteen thousand to twenty thousand over five years. And the first two years, I believe it's increments of two thousand and then the following years, three years are one thousand dollar increases. I think for the, I, I forget what, what Jamie and I kind of quickly figured in our heads, but I think it equated to a thousand dollars equates to like seventy or eighty dollars more per month for the beneficiaries of the pension. So it is a small amount. It's, it's, it's not a major amount of an increase and over, this is over the five-year period. So it's a small amount, but it does have to go through town meeting so that the appropriation is approved by the legislation.
And Frank, you mentioned your town meeting primaries. I, I know we were discussing those before our session started this morning. Just another plug for those, for folks where Frank invites in relevant folks to, to speak to some of these articles and in relatively short video segments, what, five to 10 minutes or so? Those should be out on Pegasus in the next couple of days.
Thank you, Doug.
Yeah, Metro Works has a hint, yeah.
Frank, does this apply only to those folks, retirees and survivors that are less than twenty thousand dollars or does this apply to everyone?
No, I think it's, you can, it's better to ask the retirement system folks that get up, oh, there's, there's my dog. Lolo. Lolo. That's the problem with doing this at home. I, I think you're better, better off asking the retirement system people, the Retirement Board folks either before town meeting or at, at town meeting. I don't know if that question was asked specifically at the Finance Committee. So you could actually reach out to Todd and see if, he's the chair, Gillum Water, and see if they, they, they know the answer to that question.
I don't, it just applies to those folks with a low, under twenty retirement amount, but I don't, I just want to be confirmed that.
Yeah, honestly, the word base in that description makes me think that it might be something altogether different. That it, it, it's the base at which then percentage increases are applied to. But Frank, your, your point is very good. We should talk to the Retirement Board people to get the real answer.
Yeah, I'm not an expert in it at all, so.
Yeah, I thought FinCom did a really great job of asking questions for this one. I definitely recommend watching the FinCom segment of this.
Yeah, thanks, Brynlee. Yeah, they, they did a great job. So that's Article twelve, Article thirteen. Now, that's all non-collective bargaining unit folks. That, that is twelve. Thirteen now deals with any collect, collective bargaining unit agreements that have been ratified by the Select Board and the Bargaining Unit. Town meeting, and I'm going to stress this, is only asked to raise and appropriate funds for those purposes. They're not being asked to approve the Bargaining Unit Agreements. So we're only raising the funds to appropriate the monies under the collective bargaining agreements. And there are two of them. And we've got some workmen coming into the house. There's two of them and I can't remember exactly which ones they are. Would you excuse me?
The reason Frank is remote rather than in person is, yeah, he's got some boiler people coming, I think, today.
Has your dog been out of order, Frank?
I just muted you temporarily.
He doesn't know.
Oh, you got it, yeah.
He doesn't know.
He just knew.
Frank, you got to come off mute. We had muted you. There you go.
Yeah.
Sorry, I didn't know how long you'd be gone, so I muted you because you're up there.
Thank you. Be, I'm sorry, beagles are, are big mouths. My little girl likes to make a lot of noise. So I usually have her out on the deck or, or downstairs, but I didn't do that. Traveling's home too. Okay, so that's all what's being requested. Look at the details. It'll give you the numbers, it'll give you the specific groups. And you'll, you'll see the appropriations that are being requested. Article fourteen is a Home Rule Petition establishing the Assistant Fire Chief as a non-civil service. As Jamie explained this in the, in the recording, Jamie Erickson, that is. We anticipated that when we took the chief out, that his support and direct support subordinate would also be non-civil service. But come to find out, that's not the case. He was, he, he asked that, this position, he or she, that's in the Assistant Fire Chief position has to be voted separately. So all we're, all that's being requested is to move that position out of civil service as saying, the same as the Fire Chief's position is. And that has to be an act of the, the General Court. And that's an approval that town meeting has to make. And the Select Board then is directed or authorized, I think is the appropriate word, is what that's used to petition the General Court. Article fifteen is one of, one of your folks here. Favorite article, Article fifteen, which is Personnel Board Classification and Paying Right? Again, I, I hesitated because there are a number of changes. And I'm going to use the word, the strategic changes, but in some ways they're administrative that are changing titles and in some cases changing some grades. And, and I can't remember if the grade amounts have been changed. They may be. Do you want to check the motion? But this is where those people that work on our behalf at the town are, who are non-union or not, do not fall under Collective Bargaining Agreement. These, this is these, those employees. And this is their pay plan that we set up and we approved at town meeting. Now, I'll stress a point here. Now, I'll stress a point here. It's, and it's a fine, it's a fine line that we, I try and, try and follow at town meeting. Yes, there is a discussion about different positions moving from one grade to another or from, from one, let's say, title to another. But this is not the discussion of specifically what the job discretion, descriptions are of those particular individuals, nor is it a discussion of those particular individuals. And town meeting has a tendency to kind of, let's say, move into a discussion that, that is really not their authority. Because all they're being asked to do here is to amend the bylaw that lays out the pay plan. And then the administrative decisions are made by the town administration and the appropriate board or committee that has authority over individuals to actually make those personnel decisions. And they're really the purview of the personnel board too. So not the purview of town meeting, but town meeting still has to authorize any changes in the bylaw. It's a bylaw to, so that it's codified and all those reclassifications are made and changes are made. So that's what's going on under fifty. Under sixteen. Yeah, this is a disposition of these property that the town owns, which it got tax titled a long, long time ago. I don't remember the history, but it's over in North Natick on the Natick Western Line. And it's abutted by, I think, three properties that are owned by, I think it was Rivers School. And is, I don't know what the future options on that property is, but it makes sense if, if we want to dispose this and, and sell it at fair market value, the select board are being authorized under this article to dispose of the property as they deemed. Of course, within, within the limitations of law. So check your maps, go to the accessories map if you want, and you'll see where this small piece of property is. And it is up on my former area, my former neighborhood. In the Wood Street Rathburn Rivers School area. Over near the Pickle Pond or whatever the pond is up that one. At sixteen, seventeen, Spring Street Bridge is an old bridge that well, I think it skirts over the CSX rail lines. And there are some renovations and that are going to be done to it. To do so, there needs to be some takings of property. And it's pretty clearly laid out here where that property is. And those properties that, that will be laid out, the town does have a neat map that, that shows what is going to be done. The project is actually, I think, a state project or being funded by the state. And this is just, has to be done so that, that project is done within the limitations of the design and scope. So, and I know the engineering department and the town administration and the finance committee are going to give you a far better explanation than I can, but that's what's going on here. Article eighteen is a street acceptance request of a street that's down my way down in South Natick, Greystone Lane. It's been completed for some time. It's a project that's been going on for a long time. There's actually still some units or residential units being built on the, I guess it would be the southernly side of the, the main property, the original land or proposal for development. But Greystone Lane, which is the major road in that development, is complete. It's my understanding that the, the planning board and, I don't, not sure about the select board, but the planning board signed off so that the bonds could be released, the bonds that had to be put up by the developer can be released. And we then, once that release is done, once this approval for street acceptance, acceptance occurs, the town then would take over ownership of the road. And more, more miles to our chapter ninety funds. Put it that way. Article nineteen is, is actually a, an administrative cleanup or redo of an article that we did I think three years ago, two or three years ago. This is our, this is the cluster of roads that are behind the DPW site off of West Street that are actually near the Jewish Cemetery, Del Cemetery. I think it's, no, it's not Del. On Fairview. We paved a lot of these roads and upgraded these roads from the horrible status that they were in. However, when we voted this, we voted it right at the beginning of the pandemic. And somehow, there's a, there's a window of time that we have to file these with the Registry of Deeds, I think, or some, some state agency. And we didn't make that filing in the appropriate time. And it was right around the pandemic, so it's understandable why it wasn't done in an expeditions way. So now we need to go back and revoke this. So that it is, this, this is recodified. And we can make, the town can make the appropriate filings and then take over the roads and they'll be accepted roads of the town. Glad to see that area done because I passed, I passed through there and it was pothole city.
Yeah, we had friends down there. It was a mess.
Oh, yeah, it was horrible.
Frank, a quick question, Rick DeBro. Yeah, about the road thing and that particular road. I remember the discussions at town meeting or about the number of roads in Natick that are not accepted or whatever, that are not taken care of by the town. And I'm just wondering, does, does accepting or taking over the, taking over this Wayfair Road sort of jump the queue, if you will, over some of these other roads that may have, have requested town management and are obviously much older and many of them, the ones I know anyway, which is not very many, in much worse shape than this road and are not, are not serving strictly an HOA. I'm just curious.
Yeah, I don't know about jumping over other roads. But, but this was a decision that was made by the town in, in many, well, by the engineers, by the select board, by, by town meeting to approve, improve these roads and to accept them. Accepting our unaccepted road situation is a huge topic, as you just depicted. And it comes in different, different conditions. It comes with different, different concerns, different areas. It's even portions of roads. It, it is huge and the select board, I see Catherine just put her hand up. The select board could probably answer that better. That's really not a discussion under this particular article. The scope of this article is just those roads that are listed in this article. Although it's germane, it's an appropriate topic. For town meeting, we're only focusing on these roads. Not whether my former road, Sunshine Avenue, is ever going to be accepted, probably never.
Okay, glad I asked now and not in town.
Yeah, I'm glad you asked it now too because I hate seven. Now you laugh. It's a good question. But it, it, it's a very big subject and maybe Catherine can add to my emphasis on the scope of.
She doesn't need to take everybody's time now on it. That's a, just a curiosity.
Just two sentences. So accepting town roads is pretty complicated because everyone on the road needs to agree. And so agree to what might be a taking of their, what they consider their front yard. Without going into all of the, the details, the department, the DPW has a process by which people on a street can apply for acceptance. And so these people aren't jumping ahead. There's a process and, you know, all of them had to go through that process. And so that's, that's just what this is. So that's all I'm going to say.
Okay, thank you.
And you know what, Rick, if you really want a detailed explanation of that, reach out to the DPW folks or you go to the administration. I'm sure they'd be glad to give you some.
Well, thank you both. Thank you.
Article twenty, article twenty is, this is the beginning of the zoning bylaws. And I sat down, I have to say, I sat down and recorded, I think it was like forty minutes with Amanda Loomis. And this young lady knows her stuff. She is really, really good. I urge you to listen to the primer show that I, that I recorded, to her presentation at the finance committee. Because what, the work that, this is, this is the kind of stuff that we've been wanting to do for years. And we're starting to really get some, some into the meat and, and some of the substance of what we need to do. And she does a great job at it. This, this article, I think you've already heard from Ganesh about the
Yes, that's right.
Accessory dwelling units. I'm not an expert in it. I'm fascinated by the concept personally. But this, this is the beginning of the regulations based on state law that allow us to, to do this and to increase the densities and to change our zoning bylaws to allow accessory dwelling units, which is much better than family units and things like that. So you heard all about it anyway. I'm still questioning, and, and I don't think I got any answer out of Amanda. I think the question is still out there. Does this really add to our affordable units? Affordable housing units? I don't know. That's something that is, may, may, may be a question you, you might want to ask. But I, I didn't get a clear answer on that one. There are some things that are still being decided about this. And it's only happening in residential areas. The details are really deep. So please review this before we get into town meeting. Ask questions if you need to. The next two articles are a continuation of what you folks at town meeting, or the town has gone through. I guess over the last three town, two or three town meetings. And Amanda, again, we're along with the plan, planning board. And making great strides in cleaning up our zoning bylaws. The first thing is we're changing the intensity regulations in, in our zoning bylaws so that section two hundred definitions, as well as some of the charts and, and associated places where it comes up are being amended. I'm not going, I, I couldn't go into the, the specifics of this without having the, the motion and the details in front of me. And I would, I would stumble over it anyway. Because I need to, I, I need to take the time to really sit down and look at the red line documents and compare that to what's being requested. I haven't done that yet because I haven't seen the finance committee's final copy yet. So I'm hoping that's the case. When that comes out, study article twenty one and you'll see the changes that are being made. The second, article twenty two, similarly is changing the, the use chart or schedule that's in the zoning by, bylaw. I will say that the changes that are being made in the categories that are being modified to, and, and the things that are being added and deleted made perfectly good sense to me. And are really bringing our zoning bylaws. They're contemporizing it. They're certainly make, going to make it. I think once we, we use the, the use schedule, we'll make it easier, not only for builders, but for the regulators, our planning boards, ZBA, and, and the town departments, as well as residents. Easier to use and easier to understand. So I think those changes, look at them, there are, there are a lot of them. And Amanda will give certainly brief us at town meeting as she did at the finance committee. Amanda and Claire, oh, I'm sorry, does he hand up?
Yeah, before we move on, can you just in one sentence say what intensity regulations has to do is? What is, what is, what is intensity?
Intensity is in, and actually Catherine was on the ZBA and she could probably give you the technical term. But in lay terms, intensity is the number of homes in a, in a certain area and the dimensional aspects of homes on certain properties or, or lots or plots. That's, that's basically, as I understand it, the intensity of regulations.
And just a nice shout out to Brynlee who is continuing during this discussion to put in links to a lot of relevant things. We'll, we'll get this out in the, in the next follow-up email, all of those links.
Let me just make a procedural comment. We're, we're at ten thirty, but since we really, we really lost our first half hour, I assume that we're going to keep going. And hopefully people, people, most of us can stay for a little bit longer.
Is that good for you, Frank?
I'm in it. I'm in it for the, for the end. Okay. Article twenty. Both Amanda and Claire Rendelli do an excellent job of explaining this, but I want to share with you this. I remember back in the eighties when this was first, when I first got into town meeting in the late eighties, this had already been the first rendition of the Aquifer Protection District was, was initiated. And there were a few individuals who got up and could speak to them exquisitely. And that was the tree warden, that was the chairman of the board of select and the chairman of the ZBA and the building inspector. Those four, and basically the, the CONCOM also, those four entities, four or five entities are the affected bodies that follow this body of law and local law that protect and tell us the procedures and processes for protecting our aquifer districts. This is removing what had been initially put into play in the eighties, amended again in the eighties and nineties. And then it is now being changed again. A lot to bring us up to date, a lot to, to clarify the process. And I fully understand that, fully recommend that you go to the finance committee book and look at, at least the draft that I saw of the explanation that Claire and Amanda put, Amanda put up. It's excellent. It gives you all the details I think you, you need to know. Without getting into the nuts and bolts of what, how the CONCOM and the ZBA and everybody's going to, in the planning board are going to interpret this. So I think that, that gives you an idea of what that, what this is without getting into the details of it.
Frank, is there, is there a way to see the map, current map and the change map?
Sorry, the current map is on the town website. If you look up the aquifer protection bylaw overlay, whatever they call it, if you look on the town GIS site, you can find it. One thing I will throw in on this also is it's Um, the thing I will throw in on this also is it's in certain cases. Where, where the town has an Aqua for Protection Overlay District affects not only. How the town regulates stuff, but it can have some implications for the state as well. Um, having a local bylaw can pull certain properties into, uh. Higher protection category than would otherwise be the case under the state regs. So. Just a little tidbit that it does go beyond, uh, the town's stuff.
That's our resident expert. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I, I spent my career dealing with, with groundwater. So, yeah. It was always the, you know, the, the big faux pas not to check if a town had an overlay district because. You could, if you didn't check it and it turned out they had one, it's like, oops, we need to get to a, a higher level of cleanup. So, uh. It's just something that I sort of learned to be aware of, so.
Good to learn. Thank you. I learned something with that.
Um, Article twenty-four, uh, is one that we've, probably, most of us have probably heard something about. Um, the MBTA Community, um, District, uh, zoning that's being proposed. Um, I'm not gonna try even try to explain this. Um, but, uh, as I, you know, understand it, it dovetails a lot with. The center gateway, um, zoning that we've been passing. Um, and this is a mandate that's being pressed upon us that I think we have to act on by December thirty-first. Um, not only is that, uh, impacting, impacting that, that subject matter twenty, in, in twenty-four. It's also impacted in Article, Article twenty-five. Uh, there are specifics that I don't want to get into and, cause I don't want to get them wrong. Uh, but again, I, I truly, I, the, the, uh, explanation by Amanda and. And, uh, what, uh, Jamie even added supplemented. Uh, it are, are, those are very good and very, very informative. If you watch the planning board. As I do from time to time, uh, they do a great job of asking good questions about it. FinCom does the same. Um, so, uh, without getting into the details of this. Um, there, there are questions and issues that with the map that I've already heard about. Um, they heard questions about why are we not doing something in West Natick? Um, this is not going to be affecting West Natick, uh, as I heard from Amanda. Really, those are questions for them, not for me. Um, so. You can have that at that point, but that's a subject matter of these two things. It's a very broad subject. And could take up a lot of time, the evening that I'm gonna try and segment for just zoning bylaws.
Have a couple of hands up, uh, Martin?
Yeah, um. Uh, there's been a lot of pushback on this at the last two nights, uh, of hearings. The, uh, the planning board on Wednesday night and the FinCom on Thursday night was the very last subject they talked about. Um, and if, if there's only one thing that, that I think people should listen to is Julian Munich giving a passionate speech. Uh, protesting the, uh, the state mandate, which really. Straightjackets the town into how it's gonna provide new housing. Uh, it's basically a one size fits all. It's really isn't giving us the discretion to do what we really should be doing. Um, so there was a big, uh, there was a protest vote at the FinCom of four, three people. Uh, no, I'm sorry, five people voted against this article, even though the town has to do it. Or we're gonna get punishment from the state. There were five votes against it at the FinCom. There were six votes for it. But as you may know from FinCom procedure, six, five, six vote, uh, majority is not a recommendation. So it's, it's basically up in the air at this point whether people are gonna protest this by voting against it or do it so we don't get punished. Um, but there's basically two problems. Uh, one is that we really should have done West Natick where there's actually an opportunity to have new housing. Um, as we talked about a bit last, last week, uh, we're sort of adding new parcel. Uh, we're adding parcels to the downtown mix in the center gateway in downtown Natick, but they're already developed. So there's virtually no, no opportunity for new housing. So we're not really accomplishing anything. We're just trying to get the state off our backs so we can think about this and do it in a more organized way, which does some sense to, I guess. The other problem I didn't even realize, uh, until I really went through this in more detail. Is that, that, um, Article twenty-four is changing the downtown next use zoning requirements to the, to the detriment. I think of what's, what's proper. Uh, currently there's a fifteen percent requirement for affordable housing. And that's being slashed to ten percent because the, the estate requirement is no more than ten percent can be required for affordable housing. So we're going in like the opposite direction we should be going in. Um, so there's a lot of pushback against that at the FinCom. And then the, another problem which I see is, uh, is an issue is. They're taking away the, the, um, the high density has to be as of right. So there can't be a special permit required. Um, currently there's a requirement for a special permit for downtown mix, which I think makes sense because every situation is different. We have to have a mixed use that makes some sense. Um, take away the special permit requirement. It's like it has to be approved automatically and it's not really, in my opinion, an automatic type of thing. What is the next use? Um, so anyway, these are, these were some of the issues that the FinCom raised. There's a lot more. This was again, if you want to go to the hearing, it was the very last thing they talked about at the very last hearing on Thursday.
It, it sounds like maybe, um, it, there've been several recommendations during our session this morning to. Check out either selected FinCom recordings or, um, Frank's, uh, primers with some of the town officials. Maybe as homework, since next week we will be doing our Coffee with a Purpose internal discussion, kind of lobbying for or against. Or further discussion on any of these articles, uh, folks might really wanna, you know, take the opportunity to try to, to do that, but. Uh, let's see if we can.
I, I was just gonna throw in there, I believe we, we signed up for all kinds of notifications that come from the town and. Uh, we've been away, so I'm sort of behind on my homework, but I, I believe the town has recently done a big, um, redo or update or something of the. The webpage that deals with, um, MBTA Communities Act. So, um, that would be, uh, probably worth. As I say, I've got it on my list of things to do, but I haven't done it yet.
I also would just like to say that I, I put in the link, the FinCom page. Um, and if you scroll down on the FinCom page, they list, they have, um, and. A link right to the video on demand so that you can watch all of the sessions without any, any, any issues.
Great. Thanks.
Yeah, I need, I, I need to exercise some caution because I have to preside over these things. Um, and, um, but, but I work for the state and there were, there were some times. Um, that, uh, some of the deadlines were either arbitrary. Or they made deadlines and then tried to figure out what the, the requirements were and. It, this, this whole initiative, even though it's been going on for a year or so, it has been mired by that and that's a process issue. Um, so, but I want to at least, um, um, underline, underscore what Martin said. Because, uh, they, they are real issues that, that need to be explored and I know you're gonna hear about them. Uh, by some of the members at town meeting. Uh, so watch that, watch that FinCom that was a September twenty-sixth meeting. And, uh, you'll definitely get some good, good information from there.
Uh, I can also say that, um, it's, it's that, that the questions that were brought up aren't just our town. That the state itself is grappling with all of these same questions and WBUR. You know, like three different segments on it. So if you really want to do some homework, uh, on this and the bigger picture. Not just how it relates to us, but understanding how we fit into the picture. Um, if you Google WBUR and MBTA communities, there's like three or four segments that they did that will come up that were. I found very informative, uh, about, about this.
Thank you for that. Okay.
Okay, we'll be into the next core cluster of, um, articles. I actually sat down with Christine Whitefin. Um, and recorded, uh, forty-five minutes of, uh, pretty good, uh, discussion. Of what is going to happen under, um, Articles, uh, twenty-six or thirty. Uh, actually twenty-six or twenty-nine, but I added thirty because it was, is, is kind of akin to it. Um, and, uh, I, I really urge you folks to. Go to the primer, go to the details of the finance committee or even go to the hearing. I thi- I think it might have been the twenty-fourth. Um. And listen to these details, but essentially the Article twenty-six is gonna talk about, um, a few charter changes. Um, that are being, uh, requested. One of them, uh, Brynlee is, uh, is very closely related to, uh, the quorum of town meeting. Um, and, uh, the, uh, the other issue I think that, that is gonna come up. Um, is going to be, uh, um. Oh, under the charter, what the heck was? I just lost it. But it, this, this twenty-six sets the stage for that. Um, as well as the bylaw changes that are recommended under twenty-eight and twenty-nine. So twenty-six is asking you three questions, two or three questions. Uh, first, um, can you, do you want to hear a report, uh, by the Charter on Bylaw Review Committee? Second, um, do you want to, uh, continue, um, with the, uh. Uh, committee until fall of, I think it's supposed to be, uh, twenty-five. Yeah, and third, um, really just a member of the committee. Has moved out of town and wishes to stay on the committee. Um, however, the motion that town meeting passed. Was very specific and said that residents shall be appointed. So, um, if that last paragraph under Article twenty-six is approved. Um. Yeah, um, Ms. Murkowitz, uh, will be permitted to stay on the committee. She's been on, been on two bylaw review, by, Charter and Bylaw Review Committee, uh, committees now. Um, over a period of probably ten years and she, she brings a real, uh, essence of, uh, history. Um, so that vote, that initial vote that started this current committee. Uh, will be modified only to allow, you'll see the motion when, when it's printed, only to allow, um. Ms. Murkowitz, um, to stay on the committee, even though she has moved out of town. So twenty-six is, opens up the, the door. That, that gives you the overview of what's going to be proposed under twenty-seven, twenty-eight and twenty-nine. Um, and in summary will, I think, mentions, um, thirty. Um, now. It's pretty clear if you look at the categories under each of the articles detailed on twenty-seven. Those things that could come up. Um, and, uh, you, you, if you read through these, I'm not, I don't want to toll through them.
Yeah, it's the last.
Pick up that time, but you, you can certainly see the things that might come up. Go to the finance committee book, um, and you'll see those things that are specifically being focused on. Um, and that's what will come up under twenty-seven. Uh, twenty-eight is a change, request to change some bylaws. These are essentially the police or the administrative bylaws. Um, there are a number of changes, um, being made to, uh, specifically, uh, kennels. The definition of kennels, um, then there's, uh, s- uh, definition that the police chief, uh, want recommended. Um, so that he can actually change his, some definitions in his, uh, Article fifty, I think it is. Fifty-one, um, so that he can designate someone, uh, to do what he is required. Or, uh, has the authority to do. Um, then under Article fifty-five, um, this. Fingerprinting, I think this is a redo. I think that's actually come back. Um, uh, from before, uh, is being, uh. Um. Uh, requested to be changed. So, uh, read those specifics that are in the motion. I know that they have a red line document. I always go to the red lines first. Uh, which helps me out immensely so that I could see exactly what is being deleted, what's being, um, added sometimes in its place. Or, or augmenting other language. Article twenty-nine, um, is. Want to go down a little bit? Um, uh, opens up the questions with regards to the quorum. Um, which is also the topic of, of Article thirty. Uh, it does also get into. Um, other. Things that need to happen should that vote prevail, meaning to say the special act already has a verbiage of the question. That the yes no question that goes before the public, you have to also vote that, that, that you change the yes no question. To accommodate any change that you make under this Article twenty-nine. Um. I'm staying away from talking about the specifics of the quorum discussion, pros and cons. You folks can hash that out yourself. It was something that was passed by town meeting of, by, uh, one vote. Uh, whether it's one vote or it's fifty votes that it passes by, it passed. Um, I will make that note and, uh, you are undoing a vote, previous vote of town meeting. Um. The, the merits of that, of such. Uh, I'm gonna leave, I'm not even gonna go there. Uh, Article thirty, just, just to cap it off, Article thirty is, is a question, citizen petition. Uh, Brynlee is the, uh, was the lead signer of that, so therefore she's.
Hey Deb, it's Catherine.
And if she, this is a no action as I understand it. Um, I did not, I specifically did not want to put this in a consent agenda. Because let's say for an example, um, the article, I think it was twenty-nine, to actually pass. The effect of, of thirty, um, pass, does not pass. Then the option still is open under Article thirty. If we vote to place this in a, um, consent agenda. You have to reconsider the whole consent agenda motion again. And then that wipes out any decisions under that and whatever else is in the, the consent agenda needs to be revoted. So as to avoid all that, um, I just said, let's just do the no action as it stands. Or whatever action is gonna take under Article thirty. Now I'll shut up and let Brynlee say what she has to say.
Well, before we give the floor to Brynlee, also just kind of a reminder to folks that n- next week we'll be discussing. Um, thirty, thirty-one and thirty-two in more detail because Brynlee and the. Citizen sponsors of the other two petitions, um, will be speaking to us, um, in more depth about those, but. Brynlee, you want to give us a taste or?
I can, I certainly can, or I can wait until next week. It, it's, timing is, I'm, I'm fine.
I'm just being a little bit mindful of the time here, so.
And, uh, thirty-one. Uh, is an article with regards to a war moratorium, three-year moratorium on, um, synthetic art, artificial turf. Uh, playing fields. Um, Rick came in, uh, did an excellent job. Um, and we recorded a segment, uh, I think it was twenty-five minutes. Uh, on this subject matter, uh, giving some of the background. That has, has been talked about and, and a couple of new things that were quite interesting. Um, there's a lot of information, a lot of depth of information that, the. Why this is happening and the reasons why, um, the proponents think it's right. Um, so I urge everybody to, to, uh, certainly listen to what's said next week.
But also on that, uh, article, just folks may have seen, um, in my Coffee with a Purpose announcement. Rick has put together a, a brief, uh, survey to facilitate next week's discussion. Um, it, it kind of tests levels, uh, people's level of, uh, knowledge, existing knowledge already about the subject. Um, and if you want to fill that out, the response will go to Rick and that will help inform his presentation to us next week. So I'd urge you to do that.
Excellent. Good point. I saw that. Um, finally, Article thirty-two, I know you're gonna hear this, but I just wanted to give a little. Uh, of my background information. This is not the first time a nu- a noise and nuisance bylaw similar to this is. Come before town meeting. Um. And, uh, this restriction that would be voted, um, has been discussed over the years. Um, and, um, uh, this, it's bigger, this is a bigger topic than just the restriction. As the motion may appear. Um, and I think a lot of it goes into. Uh, the police chief had a lot of discussion with the previous noise by law requests. Um, as to how is it even gonna be? um, as to how is it even going to be enforced? Um, and how then, you know, are we going to measure any kind of uh, decimal levels? Um, if, if it gets into regulating, the regulations get into that. Um, it, 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 it's a very complex subject. It's, it's a little, there's a little more to it than just saying you can't do it after this date or whatever. Um, and uh, I, I, I urge you folks to listen to, to the discussion. The discussion I heard at the Fincom was fabulous. I did not record anything in, in the uh, uh, primer show under Article thirty two, but because I, I, I thought that the discussion that the finance committee had was, was excellent and the presenter, the proponent did a really good job. So that's it. Um, remember Kennedy Middle School. Don't, I don't want to hear anybody going to the high school. So you, you're going to hear that so many times during the primer show, it's going to, you're going to say, oh, there goes Foss again. Um, I, you know, I hope that, uh, you know, everybody can make it there and, and I hope that that venue and, and these issues we work through. It can, it can, can be done. Now, what I'm, I am going to try and do, just to cap it off, is I'm going to try and break town meeting up into uh, three pieces, actually four pieces. Um, and that is the financials, we always try and do that first. Then we're going to, going to get into uh, the zoning. Uh, then we'll get into um, the CBRC and the citizen petitions and then whatever is left over um, that gets postponed or doesn't get done in those first three sessions or three targeted sessions, we'll do in that in, to follow up. Uh, so that's, that's what I'm thinking uh, for fall town.
Great. Uh, thank you. Brinley, did you have something or?
I just wanted to say I've been thinking about this so much, Frank, with the whole switch of venue. I, of course, am devastated by it because now I can't walk. But I, I, I've been wondering if we should like recommend putting up a large sandwich board that's just right there at the end of West Street as you're coming down that says town meeting is at Kennedy. Yeah, exactly. So that it just, anybody that really isn't paying attention, they, they see it immediately as they're driving down the street, this large sign or, or sandwich board that says, you know, town meeting is at Kennedy.
Excellent point. I'll talk to uh, the clerk and DPW about that.
I hear you, Brinley. I was going to bring it up. This is, but uh, I think I would put it at the entrance to the highs. Once you get into the light area by the high school. Um, because I, I never look at signs when I'm making a turn. It's too, they're distracting. It's going to be dark. Don't forget, it's going to be dark. So you need a lot of light on it.
So I guess we need two of them then, two of them, one, one for people coming off of uh, twenty seven onto West and one for people coming straight down west.
They have those electronic signs they could use too.
Oh, yeah? Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I'll ask you.
I was thinking of one, one on the door of uh, of the high school for dummies like me that don't read any signs at all. Locked the door.
Maybe we can all get help, all get help from our favorite uh, select board chair. He, uh, he can help um, talk to the DPW on the police department, see if we can get their uh, roving for trailer sign.
I will uh, send an email right now to John Westerling and um, we will also announce it at the select board meeting tomorrow and again on the ninth.
Thanks. I was, I was going to attend to announce that.
Oh, well, I don't want to take.
No, you go ahead, go right ahead in your, in your announcements. It's even more, more important that you folks say it.
Yep, we will um, include that in announcements and I'll actually get it. Um, I'll send an email to Billy to put it uh, on the agenda so that if people aren't opting, but they're checking the agenda.
Thanks Catherine.
Of course.
Thank you. Martin, did you have something else?
Um, yeah, uh, two questions, two quick questions, Frank. Um, one is about when can we expect to have access to the Fincom um, recommendation book? Do you know when that is issued?
I think Todd and, and, and his folks that are working on it, we're going to target it, target the uh, third uh, for it to be sent out um, in, in at least the first mailing of it. So that means I would assume that he's pretty much done doing all the work on, on it. So I, he usually publishes it before it goes out into the, into the mail. So I would say the next day or so. Keep an eye on that.
I remember during the, during the Fincom meetings, he asked everyone to make sure that he had all, all of the information by the second. Um, for everybody who was helping him put the book together so that he could do it all. So I'm, I'm guessing we won't see it before Thursday or Friday because he has to format everything.
I, well, okay.
This week. Second question. Um, I know you can't give me an exact sense, but uh, can you give me a sense of when we'll know when, in my case, Article nine will be discussed? So uh, I need to be there, so I need to know what it's going to be. What you're, I, I guess you, at some point I'll know, but I just wondered when that is.
Be there on the fifteenth.
Fifteenth? Okay.
Because it's, it's, it's part of the first cluster of articles. Um, and it's very, very possible that that will come up night one.
Okay, I thought that might be the seventeenth, but um, that's fine. I can be available both days.
Well, fifteen, if, be there the fifteenth, you'd be surprised how some things can go. It can go quickly and it can go slowly. So uh, you don't want to be, you don't want to be cut short. You don't want to have to have it postponed, um, because then it goes to the back of uh, somebody's mind.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Well, again, thank you very much, Frank, uh, for this marathon session. No thanks to the people that made it longer at the beginning, but.
I have a procedural question. Um, I'm here at Metro Works and without my computer, so I haven't been seeing, I've seen Brinley's um, links, but um, what happens to the, to the chat?
Um, what happens is that um, I review it typically and for most or at least some of the links or other information that's relevant to share, normally I include that in the email that goes out as the announcement for next week's session. In this week's case though, because there was so much information shared that would be useful to review during the week. Um, I'll be putting out in uh, email within the next uh, day, maybe later today, certainly tomorrow with the latest uh, with all of that information. So everyone's going to get an extra email this week.
Thank you.
And uh, at the town meeting members also keep an eye out. Um, I will be sending out the agenda emails. Um, and I'll, I'll also try and include as much information as through links as possible to in those. So the more venues that we have to gather information, the better.
Yeah.
Just a quick question. Will those emails, are you going to send out an, an early email to remind everybody about the location?
Yes.
I knew you would. I just felt like asking.
Yeah, my, my minimum that I do is, I, 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 on that, I, you know, Facebook and uh, which also goes, goes out in Twitter, but also uh, uh, through the town meeting members uh, in, interested parties lists that I have. I'll send that out.
So the agenda for October one for tomorrow night's meeting, I can't add it because the forty eight hours has passed, but it will be on the October ninth and we'll announce it anyway, even though it's not physically on the agenda under announcements.
That's fine.
Okay.
Everybody's in tune to, to what's going on. Um, and uh, that's, that's fine, Cap. Thank you.
Great. Uh, one last thing, Brinley, or?
Um, yeah, I was wondering if I could ask Catherine a quick question about procedure. I am supposed to be on the agenda for October ninth for the select board, but since there's no action, do you, should I call Billy and say that I don't need to be on there? What, do I, do I, should I still go through it and come, come? What?
This is an interest, interesting question. So the Fincom recommendation is to town meeting, not to the select board.
So should I still plan on coming and presenting to you even though um, it should be, even though that it's the, we want it to go through the CBRC?
Uh, you know, I, let me, let me talk with you offline about that.
Okay, great. Yep. Thanks.
Okay, good. Well, uh, enjoy the rest of the day.
Doug, if I could, that I'll, I'll be at that uh, on the agenda, I think at October, on October ninth as well. Uh, with others probably to present to the select board for anyone who's interested. Thank you.
Great. Thanks. Okay.